Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and before we get started with the meeting, if you have your cellphones with you, please make sure you mute them or turn them off, if you would, please. And again, welcome to the municipality of Monroeville Citizens Night and Council Work Session. Today is Thursday, May 4th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. We'd all kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim, if you were on the list.
I got a change.
Is there another, any more on my outside?
I think you're stuck with it.
Hey, it's better than sitting.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll announce anybody that wants to come up first, that signed in first, but I'll leave the floor open for anybody who would like to address council beside that. So Nikki Long, if you'll please come on up, just state your name for the record and that you live in Monroeville. You do not have to give your address.
Okay. My name is Nikki Long. I do live in Monroeville. I live on Vanderbilt Drive in University Park. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and also I'm not very good with public speaking, so bear with me.
You're doing fine.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Long, and I've been a resident of Monroeville for the past nine years. I am addressing you today about a situation that occurred in my neighbors and myself a few weeks ago. On Wednesday, or on April 13th, I received a certified letter from the municipality of Monroeville. This letter stated that after an inspection of my home on April 11th, I was in violation of Section 106 of Ordinance 2479, weeds and plant growth of eight inches high. The letter also stated I had five days from inspection day or April 15th to correct this issue. However, since the letter arrived three days after the inspection date, I only had two days to correct the issue. Immediately upon receiving the letter at 4:15 on April 13th, I called the Monroeville Borough Building. With no answer, I left a message. I followed up with a phone call the next day. No answer, I left a message. At that time, I went on the website, and that's where I found out you guys did close on that Friday for Easter weekend. I was unable to speak to anyone about the violation until April 17th, two days after the deadline. Although I believe the municipality was attempting to do the right thing, the process of how this violation was completed in my neighborhood was unjust. During this time, I would like to emphasize a few questionable factors, in my opinion, about the municipality procedures. The violation clearly states that my grass was in excess of eight inches. In order to be compliant with the statement, a municipal employee must measure my lawn. This clearly was not done in my case. I was working from home the 11th when I noticed a white sedan driving slowly through our neighborhood. As a concerned citizen, I intensely watched and waited for the car to turn around on Cortland Avenue, or Cortland Drive, I'm sorry. It was then I noticed the municipality decal on the car. I continued to watch the sedan drive up Cortland and down Vanderbilt. Not once did that employee ever stop and walk out of the car to measure my lawn or my neighbor's lawns. When speaking to the code inspector who enforced this violation on my property, he informed me, and I quote, "His perspective through a car window is good enough to give my property a violation." I believe that if a violation is given to a citizen, proof should be taken. A glance and a perspective is not scientific proof for eight inches. Additionally, the inspection was made on April 11th. Only four days prior to this was the most recent snowfall for Monroeville. Western Pennsylvania is notorious for experiencing four seasons in a week, let alone in the same day, we all know this. In this particular week, it was no exception. The municipality of Monroeville must take weather changes into account when going around with these inspections. They must consider the residents' work life and home life when giving us enough reasonable time to attend to their lawns after a spring snowstorm. When speaking to Paul Hugus on the 18th, three days after the violation, he actually stated it might have been premature to give out these violations to the neighborhood. Moreover, when I did speak to Paul, he did mention that the compliance department has been given pressure from the municipality to enforce cleanliness of our neighborhoods. I completely understand and agree with this. We want to keep our neighborhoods safe and pristine. Even in the mayor's 2017 State and Municipality Report, he indicated that one of our goals is to attract younger families to Monroeville because of the decline enrollment in Gateway School District. As a mother of two young boys under the age of four, I fall into this category. Much as we want to attract younger families to Monroeville, we should also want to keep these families here. Handing out violations to entire neighborhoods four days after the last snowfall shows me that the government officials are not here to work with us, but against us. My family and I choose to live here. This is where my husband grew up. This is where his family is. We love the opportunities that this community offers to our children, but now we have to take into consideration if the pros outweigh the cons and if the municipality is going to be a constant battle where we live at. Ultimately, I stand before you because I'm asking you to make a change. I insist that when handing out violations to residents in our community, that proof is obtained. A building inspector cannot inspect a building from sitting in his or her car. A code enforcer, I'm sorry, code enforcer cannot state exactly how high a grass is from his car window. The 60 seconds that it might have taken to park the car, get out of the car with a measuring roller, and take a snapshot could have saved the municipality hundreds, maybe thousands of dollars a year on sending unnecessary certified letters to our citizens along with regular letters in the mail. We will also eliminate the sense of betrayal that we have experienced. We share the same goals, which is to ensure that our neighborhoods are both safe and aesthetically pleasing. The residents are the building blocks of this community, and we need to work together, not against each other, to ensure growth and prosperity in our municipality. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Nikki, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What would you like us to consider?
I would like you to consider making a change, making a rule that when giving out violations, that proof is obtained. That you should not just stand in a car and drive around and say, "That person's grass looks a little bit high," or "That person is in violation of this person." I want it to, if you are about to send a violation of $500 a day, you should have proof to back it up, because if you do not, the citizens, for us to even fight it, would cost a $500 non-refundable fee. A lot of people do not have that extra $500 to fight it. It's not fair. It's your word against ours, and you will win every time.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I'm trying to look at this thing as what you said in your speech there, which is keep the neighborhoods clean and attractive. A, I don't know that the municipality has the right to enter your property anytime. I don't know.
No.
But if, if the inspector or the code enforcement officer measured it at seven inches, you get what I'm saying?
Then the code should be changed, because your code actually says in the code, eight inches. It clearly states eight inches. If I'm seven inches or six inches, whatever, I am not in violation of your code.
And if they change it to excessively high, then it becomes opinionated.
Right, but right now, it's opinionated. It's opinionated to the point of the code enforcer, who he wants to give a violation to.
We have a lot of people that come up and complain about, and I'm not saying your property is not cared for, I'm just saying that we have a lot of people that come up and complain, and I get phone calls from time to time from residents that, you know, try to keep their property nice, and maybe the neighbor doesn't, or maybe it's abandoned property. So we spend a lot of money on sending people around to cut grass to the abandoned properties. So I'm trying to think of a way, and I understand what you're, what you're getting at, but...
I guess the thing is, is that if you drive in a car around an entire neighborhood four days after the last snowfall and hand out X amount of...
Well, the snowfall thing has me troubled, but it...
And it definitely snowed that day, because I was packing up my kids to go away for the weekend, and I can remember putting on winter coats for them.
Do we have an idea of, I mean, do we have a way of giving a warning, let's say, wouldn't you have been more satisfied if I'd have knocked on your door and said, "Hey..."
I would have been more satisfied if I would have received a letter, non-certified.
Right.
It doesn't need to be certified, no. Letter saying, "Hey, we were out, we noticed that your lawn is a little bit high, you have one week to take care of it," instead of saying, "You have five days or April 15th to take care of it, or you're going to be charged $500 a day."
I know we have an ordinance of refuse. You can't put out building material. And if you do, what, at the time, the driver would hand or put a post-it on your door stating, you know, "Maybe we'll pick it up this time, maybe we won't, but don't put out this type of material." I can't see why we couldn't do that in this case. You know, put a, put a door hanger on saying, "Hey, your grass is a little high, can you attend to it?"
May I make a suggestion, council?
I think it is.
What I'm going to do is, Nikki, I'm going to give you, I forgot my cards. Here's Tim's card with his office number. How about we take out under advisement your statements? I think there were some good suggestions up here.
Nikki, when you received the letter and the person that signed that letter, was that, did that person have his phone number on that letter?
The phone number was on there. I called it.
What phone, do you remember, was it, was it the municipal number, or was it that person's extension?
It's the code enforcement's office number.
It's 3488.
Okay. Now, whose extension is it?
It's one of the code enforcement officers, but they're in the field a lot, and it was leading up to a holiday. We were off Good Friday, and that was part of the problem. I mean, so when they come back into the office, they receive...
Is that the number you called to leave a message?
I called it that day at 4:15, no answer. I called it the next day. I called it Monday. I got a return phone call on Monday, which then during that phone call, he transferred me to Paul, where I left him a message, and then I spoke to Paul on the 18th, which would have been three days after the violation, was due.
I think, I think we'll look into this.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to...
Thought on a warning type thing, a door hanger.
Nikki, stay, stay, give us a couple days.
I don't think you throw up under their property to do that.
You're allowed to walk onto anybody's, onto their sidewalk to go knock on a door?
No, no, no.
I can't come knock on your door?
Not as a, not as a code enforcer, I don't believe that you're allowed to walk up to your door.
There's legalities associated with code enforcement officers' approach getting on private property. You can't do... They can't come knock on a door? No. You can't put door hangers, you can't, you have to do it. The only way to send a mailing is by certified mailing, is the only legal way of notification.
Can you send a photograph of the issue?
Sure, and we take photographs of all the code violations.
Did you receive a photograph?
Excuse me, with the exception of the grass, just because there's so many grass violation letters that go out. If you sent a warning for it first, you know, the problem is, is it becomes compounding, because if you give them a week, and then they don't do it, then you send us a violation letter, now you're another week into it, the grass becomes very high.
Mr. Duck, do you realize, do you remember, we talked about spending four, five, $6,000 a month in, in grass cutting fees?
Absolutely.
For people that have not, and they bought the violation letter. I'm saying there is, there's a fine line here.
I'm trying to suggest a compromise here, a calming.
Right.
You know, rather than, I'd be upset if I received a letter like that. Because sometimes you have issues. You know, your mower's broke, whatever.
I do understand.
Here's a young mother that is stressed beyond sleep.
But the code enforcement officer doesn't know that, so by the time he talked to her to get the circumstances, then maybe there could have been something worked out at that time.
But also, you hand out a violation to a large amount of people in the neighborhood? Isn't that all those...
We had just re-enforced our code enforcement department, so I think probably what was happening is they were doing catch-up. It's just my guess, I don't know if I'm correct or not.
In the month, in the month of April, there was 400 violations letters sent out throughout the municipality.
When did our new code enforcement people start?
April.
In April. So 400, 400 letters went out.
There were 400 letters that went out.
Due to the early weather.
250 of them were grass-related.
Yeah.
Again, council, I would suggest that we allow Bob and Tim to maybe look and see if there's some other alternatives. I heard clearly what you said, Paul. The law states that we have to do it a certain way, but maybe there's something else we can accommodate. Because I agree with you, I think that's, you know, I wouldn't be happy about it.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Certainly open for discussion, which is good.
Thank you very much.
Doreen, I'm hoping I'm saying your name right. Verolo?
Verolo.
I did it right?
You did it right.
I had a little help, though.
My name is Doreen Verolo, and I am a resident of Monroeville.
Welcome.
Thank you. I represent the Glenwood Condominium Association. I'm the president of the association, representing 200 owners with 200 townhouses located on Oldway and Penn Highway.
Welcome.
Our concern this evening is the proposed building of Vasa Enterprises on Oldway and Penn Highway. Now, I have half the executive board here this evening that would like to speak. I believe they signed in, and several residents. So I will not go over all my points, so I don't waste your time, let other people speak. I have three major points that I'm very concerned about. One is the amount of parking spaces available. We have a 700-square-foot social hall in Glenwood. An owner can rent it. We have a 66-person occupancy, and we have 20 parking spaces. We frequently have people parking in the streets because the 20 spaces are not enough for our social hall. This is a 15,000-square-foot facility with a 7,000-square-foot social hall that's being proposed with 65 parking spaces. Where are they going to park? Well, they'll probably park in Glenwood, or in the Brewster Parking Lot, or Giant Eagle. We are very concerned about the safety on our streets. We do not allow owners and guests to park on our streets. If they are parked overnight, we call the police. We don't seem to have, we're able to monitor our own people. We will not be able to monitor people coming into Glenwood and parking on the public streets, parking in front of driveways, whatever. So we have, we feel that the parking is insufficient for the amount of space that is proposed. Our second concern is Glenwood maintains sidewalks. We shovel them, we repair them, we replace them. The property next door to us also has sidewalks. It is not a very safe road, because there is no area beside the road to walk. The fact that this property may not have sidewalks is going to be, I feel, we feel, maybe a safety issue. And thirdly, as you know, that area is prone to flooding with the runoff. We had, of course, Glenwood flooding, which of course, so graciously, you have fixed for us. But more importantly, we had a car right by the historic bridge which flooded, and the fire department, I believe, had to come and save the woman.
That's correct.
And I also, as you know, saw the big sinkhole at Giant Eagle. We have a water problem there, and there is due to all the runoff. So we are also very concerned about the flooding issue in that small area there. So I would like, on behalf of the Glenwood condo association, to ask you to please deny this particular proposal for the proposed building.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, is that Hanson?
Hi, Duke.
Well, it kind of looks that way, sorry.
You blew that one.
Well, sorry.
Could you say your last name again, sir?
It's Erin Hiduk, H-A-J-D-U-K. I am a resident of Monroeville. I live on 2148 Haymaker Road. I also own property on 723 Vanderbilt Drive. So this is also off of Nikki's. I also received a notice. I received mine on the 14th at 4:45 PM. I immediately called Jason Sonofelt, at the number listed. Obviously, the 14th, you were off Good Friday. The 16th was Easter. I didn't get a call back till Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon. I didn't have five days. I didn't have April 15th. I had holiday plans, just like everybody else, and the borough obviously was off. So, one, the timing, a little poor on, on your part, on, on your inspector's parts. Two, I have an issue with things that are arbitrary. So your 302.4 says, "High grass and weeds, neat cut, maintain less than eight inches throughout the growing season." What's the growing season? I'm asking. I'd like to know, because again, we had, we had snow four days before, so what's the growing season?
Good point.
I'd love to know.
It's actually April through July. I know that's like garden, that's the only reason. I'm sorry.
Does it say April through July in here? Does it say April 1st?
Nope, I agree with you.
So if you're going to sell notifications with arbitrary information, you're going to get arbitrary responses. You're going to get people angry, you're going to get people upset. And in this case, you actually caused neighbors to get upset with other neighbors.
Oh.
And the reason why is because previously, you got one of these notices.
That's not it.
It's because somebody called and said, "You have, you're a problem." There wasn't this idea of people driving around. I get it. I'm sure it's happy that this driving around isn't completely new, but you did hire a bunch of new inspectors, and now we have an overabundance, and maybe overzealous, want to get our job, do our job right. So we end up with this. So when I talked to the inspector, he's like, "Look, nobody, nobody called about your..." That was the first thing out of his mouth about when I called. So obviously, when talking to him, Jason said, "Yeah, people are blaming another neighbor, no neighbor called." So you create a situation in a neighborhood because you're arbitrary, because you can't state, "Hey, start April 1st, we expect everybody to have their grass cut." Something. This, this is a nightmare, this should never happen, and this is poor judgment to do this before Easter.
That's good, that's good information on the, on the growing season. That's something I personally didn't even know, but that's good information now to have, I think, for all of us, knowing the April 1st date.
Well, you know what, Erin, the best thing you and Nikki can do, and anybody else having that same issue, is bring it forth. Now, I can tell you, as elected officials, we don't get everything that goes on, we don't know, there's no way I can know that. But again, I think just for, defend the code guys. They're just doing their job. Were they a little overzealous? Probably, because you're right, four days prior to, you had snow. That's why, give us a chance to take a look at this and see what we can do. There may be a better way to do that. Now, there are certain rules, Paul, am I correct? We have to follow.
That's correct.
So, and that's what, state, or is that our stuff?
There are little notification rules.
Okay. So let us take a look at that. I'm not trying to cut you off, please continue if you have more to say.
No.
But we get it, I get it, I think we all get it, we need to look at it.
I think the point, and I understand you have rules that you have to follow, and I'm not, I'm not mad about receiving a certified letter. I am mad about an arbitrary procedure that I'm being told I have to adhere to, and you can't tell me when it starts. I do have problems with that.
Well, I think we all know it now, so that's, that's, you taught us all something, at least me, you taught me something.
Is it, I mean, I don't know, is that officially it? I don't know. We, we think it is, but isn't.
Well, we need to look at the document, put that date in.
And moving forward, define it. If it is, define it.
Then we'll define it, yes, I agree. So that's good. Good information, good for us to know.
I think Mother Nature defines it. I don't know if anybody else knows, but spring sprung early, and grass started growing early. I mean, it's just, I don't think you can put an arbitrary date on it, because, you know, if winter would have lasted further into April, growing season would have not started till May.
But if there's an official growing season, then it is what it is. I'll take that over arbitrary. I'll take you saying April 1st, is it, whether it snows or not. I'll accept that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Anything else is, "Oh, we decided it's growing season, four days after it snowed. It's growing season, is it?"
I had to cut my grass before it grew. It's April 14th to October 7th.
That's official.
That's official. But we need, we need to outline that, I agree, 100%.
Yeah.
This is an extremely funny spring.
Yeah, it is a weird one.
It was.
It's an odd winter, too. My grass hasn't stopped growing all winter, how about yours? But I sectioned...
I cut my damn grass five times already.
I cut my grass in December.
And I got someone coming to my house to try to make my grass grow, so...
So all I'm asking is, again, you have a rule, define it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give us some time to look at it, and I, and again, you can certainly state, Nikki has that number, you can call Tim after these two...
I have your number from a previous time.
Well, you call me any...
You don't remember the water issue?
Oh, that, well, yeah, well, you can certainly, you can call anytime, you know that. You can call anytime, you know that. All righty. Bonnie Bain. Oh, I'm sorry, Ron, you want to say something? Hang on a minute.
Yeah, I think you're all fickle. About two months ago, there's people up there complaining about neighbors with high grass, and we're saying, "Yeah, get them, find them, destroy them, hang them, put them in the gallows." And then it happens, and everybody's saying, "Ah, we're wrong." And all I'm saying is, I think he's right, and I think the residents are right, I think we need to define it a little more. All the people are just doing what they're told to do.
Agreed. You heard me say that, I'm backing down.
I agree with that. I don't blame... I blame Jason.
Do we need to fine-tune the ordinance a little bit or something? Maybe. But I understand that those guys went out and did what they were instructed to do.
Yes.
You pointed out some weaknesses.
Correct.
We need to fix.
Right, I agree.
Some clarification. I think we just need some clarification.
When I talked to Jason, I had no issue with... Again, I have no issue with receiving it, but you better be able to define it.
Aaron, we can't hear people, they don't come up to the microphone.
Okay.
No, I get it. I just... As all I'm saying is, is those employees went out and did what they were told.
Nobody's going to argue that, Ron. I agree, you heard me say that, they're just doing their job. Okay, Bonnie, come on down.
You okay?
Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Bain, and I'm a resident of Monroeville. I'm here asking if the historic land site that sits on the property that will be developed by the developer into a social hall has been taken into consideration. Upon speaking, I have a picture of the land... Did you know there was a historic land site there?
I'm sorry, what property are you talking about?
You're talking about Old William Penn.
Yes, on Old William Penn, where the social hall will be built.
Where the proposed...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear as to where you were speaking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's an historic landmark there, and a...
The bridge.
Yes, it's here.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
And it works. Even has a plaque on it.
Yes, it does. I spoke to the Pittsburgh Historical Society, who granted that, and the builder has to obtain permission from this council and from the planning commission to build near that. There is a required distance between where the development is and where the historic site is. He has to get that permission prior... It has to be included in the site plan.
You guys want to see this?
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you. It has to be included in the site plan prior to his putting a shovel in the ground. And so, I just wanted you to be aware of that, so that isn't destroyed.
Mr. Heeser?
Yeah, is it shown?
It varies. That's why he has to... He has to... The builder, the developer, needs to get that answer for himself and follow that guideline.
Oh, is that...
Is it shown?
The bridge in question is not on the site being developed. It's totally off of the site plan.
It is.
It's not a part of it. No, ma'am.
That's all I care about. Thank you. I'm done here now.
Oh, that was easy.
Jeanette Beagle, come on down.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Beagle.
Jeanette, I'm sorry.
That's all right, everybody does it.
Why do I do that? And I know that...
There's two Ts in it either. Two Ts in it.
Yeah. I was right, I did say your name was Jeanette. I was right.
All right, all right.
I am here tonight to, one, to let the public know that we have a meet-the-candidate night that was planned for Monday, May 8th. It was originally supposed to be at the Gateway High School Auditorium. May or may not be known, the school board did not get a majority vote to grant us permission use of it, so we had to relocate the facility. It is still happening Monday, May 8th at the Garden City Fire Hall. We are very thankful to the Fire Hall, they moved their monthly meeting out of the room so that we could have it to have this event. It is with the candidates that are running for the Magisterial District Judge, the Monroeville Council, Gateway School Board, and mayoral candidates. Encourage everybody to come out here with the candidates have to say. This is a very important election, there are a lot of seats available.
Excuse me, I'm looking at this lady here.
There are a lot of seats available, and it's in our best interest to get to know who these people are, where they stand on issues, before you walk into the election booth. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware, yes.
I would suggest that you put a sign on the doors at the Gateway High School, because it's in the Times Express today.
It is.
As to where it is.
The Times Express, yeah.
And you might have people show up and be like, "What am I supposed to do?"
Yeah, the Times Express did send information over to the superintendent.
Okay.
That's what they told us.
So, maybe if they put a sign...
April has also emailed them, because we'd like to be...
You know people are still going to Gateway.
No matter what, it's going to happen.
I know, I know.
It's going to happen.
It's going to happen, but...
At least put up some sign, and you should let them know that it has been moved and where to go, and I think that will be a huge help.
Absolutely.
So, just kind of a thought.
We already have our stuff made.
Okay, good.
It's a matter of, are we allowed to put it on the doors, or does the school have to put it on the doors?
Well, we have some school board people here, you can ask them now.
It's already been addressed, it will be posted.
Great. There.
Okay, and just to let the public know, doors open at 5:45. Candidates start at 6:30, and we go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette.
No problem, thank you.
Don, come on down. State your name for the record, sir.
Donald Charlton, Monroeville resident. Mr. Mayor and council, I have a question regarding the paper road located at 4678 Old William Penn Highway. Does council sell this road, and are they obligated to sell this road to the owner of that property now?
Are you referring to the property being developed on Old William Penn?
Yes, sir.
There is a paper street. It is not being affected.
Not in any way.
No, sir.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul's on fire. Jennifer Holmes. State your name for the record as your resident of Monroeville.
Jennifer Holmes.
All right, there you go.
Jennifer Holmes, and I'm a resident of Monroeville. I live up in University Park, and I'm another resident that received a letter for the grass-weed issue, and was upset about it because it ruined my holiday. I tried to make phone calls, again, you guys were off. I worked a half a day, and I had plans to go to church that day for Good Friday, but instead I had to maintain my grass, which was not eight inches, it was below eight inches, and it was going to be my first grass cutting of the year. Also, on my property, I have water issues. I've had it in the past, you guys are aware of it. It has gotten better, but I still have a water issue, and my yard is swampy, so sometimes I have to let the yard dry out before I can go and cut my grass. I don't feel that it was necessary to send out a certified letter, and then also a regular letter.
You got two?
I got two letters, yeah. One by mail, and then when I talked to them, called, when I finally got to talk to somebody either Monday or Tuesday, they said it was required that they had to send out two letters. A certified letter, I want you to know, it cost them $6.56 to mail out. So, I don't...
Well, we have to verify that you've received the letter, so therefore, if you are fined, and you have to pay a fine, we have to verify that you were given the information...
I understand that.
Ahead of time. I'm just saying...
Right, I understand.
That we can't just say, "Oh, we know you got that letter,"
Right.
And we don't have any proof that you got that letter.
But if you're going to drive around, you're going to hand out a letter. If you do it by regular mail, and maybe like a week later, if that person has not cut their grass, then yes, maybe give them a letter.
But then that can take you into seven to 10 days, 14 days, from the time you've observed.
Well, somebody that doesn't care about their yard is not going to cut their grass then. So, I've lived in Monroeville for 13 years in my house. I've lived in Monroeville all of my life. I lived on Cortland. And I chose to live here, I wanted to brought my daughter back here to go to Gateway, and now she's graduating. And I maintain, I'm a single parent, I maintain my yard, I work full-time, so you don't understand the circumstances of some people. University Park has a lot of elderly people, they're the same owners that have been there from day one, that, when I lived there, I was little, they're still there. And I can't afford to have someone come in and cut my grass. I cut my grass every week, and like Aaron suggested, what is the growing season?
Your points are well taken. If there's anybody else that wants to address the grass issue, give us an opportunity to review.
Yeah.
Because I think...
I think timing with Easter was bad.
That is...
I kind of do think that has added into this whole...
Right.
This whole pot of mess.
But because we also have...
But you understand the situation. If you want your neighbor's yard to look well for your house, and we want the same.
I understand that.
So, I think the timing with the Easter has been a bad situation, I think the season has been bad, I think a little bit more definition will help. So, please, thank you for bringing us up to speed on what happened.
But also...
And give us some time so that we can clean this up a little bit, so that it's better for everybody.
Just to jog my memory, and I'm not trying to bring up, add more to this, but what your water issue is what? I can't remember. I know we've been in that area.
Runoff water from a line I drive behind us, coming down driveways and into a lot of homes.
Is that stormwater runoff? Is that stormwater runoff?
Stormwater runoff.
Which we have an issue with, as we all know.
Let's... Paul, is that stormwater runoff?
Mayor, we restructured Vanderbilt Drive.
I know that, that's why I'm talking to you.
And dye tested it. In other words, we put a lot of water on the road, put dye on it, didn't end up in the backyards, it maintained on the road.
Is this between neighbor and neighbor?
Yeah, they're the lower side of Vanderbilt.
Okay, so...
I'm going to... I will...
You have to come up to the...
I'm just reading that.
Aaron, Aaron.
You have to come up, you have to...
Oh, you have to come up.
Please.
State your name for the record.
Or we're going to get you out at five... Can I just... Downstairs again.
723 Vanderbilt. The dye test, where you did the dye test, and where the water, two different places, and we went through this then. I ended up doing $8,000 of repairs in my yard to keep the water that's coming down out of it over there.
Aaron, I was at your house with Jennifer during a rainstorm at 8 o'clock at night. We were out there together.
And you're telling me, and there was no dye done when we were standing out there?
No, I agree with you, we did not dye it at that point.
And we stood and watched the water come down, the rental property, through that driveway, go all the way down, come around that bend, and end up in our... So, you're saying that didn't come from the road?
No, absolutely.
So, where did it come from?
It comes from the property above you.
It doesn't come from...
Yes, it does.
You saw the water come over the curb.
No, it did not come over the curb.
We talked... Yes, it did, we talked about it then.
Not after the road was reprofiled, water did not come over the road.
They never raised the curb.
We re-profiled the road. That water comes from other, from proper properties above you.
I think you need to come to that again, then, because you're wrong.
No, I disagree.
Well, I disagree. And this is where we're at.
Oh, well, you know what? Again, we could probably talk about this all night long, and that's not really helping your situation, and it's, I think, give us a chance to review the grass issue. If there's something else we need to do, we can talk to Paul. Again, give us a chance, Aaron, that's all I'm saying.
You brought this back around.
Well, I did.
So, you brought that back up, and that's a whole, you know, so...
But I'm okay with that, because I want to know what's going on. If you have an issue, we need to address it.
It's never been fixed, it's never been corrected. It was caused after the roadwork was done, but nobody wants to acknowledge that, that we were, we never had an issue, then suddenly we have one after all the work's done on the road.
I live on the other side of the street from Aaron. What you guys did correct my water issue to coming to my house. They live on the other side, their issue is probably still there, my issue is gone. I think the manhole was reopened.
Cash basin.
The cash basin was reopened. As soon as you reopened it, I never got another inch of water in my basement again. And I was getting up to like four to five inches every rainfall. So, my issue was corrected, but I live on the other side of the street as they do.
Let us look into it, folks.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
Okay, so, driving through Monroeville, Monroeville has to maintain grass, and some their grass, I think they take care of grass on Elliott Road. I see trimmers, people in the summertime come up twice, maybe twice during the season to cut grass.
Where at in Elliott?
On Elliott, going up into the University Park, past the apartments.
I think that's right-of-way cutting. We have a mow trim that comes along.
Oh, okay.
That's right-of-way.
Okay.
I think that's what you're referring to.
I mean, who maintains that? Monroeville?
If it's a municipal road, otherwise it would be county or state.
Okay. Well, if I'm going to be told about my grass and my neighbor's grass in our neighborhoods, I think if you want to make Monroeville presentable, that maybe instead of concentrating on all of our yards, maybe take care of your grass, too, more or less. Because right now, that grass is higher than what my grass is in my yard. And I'll admit, my grass does need cut, and as soon as this rains, I'll tell be out there to cut my grass.
Really? You want us to put enough people on to keep all the public streets below eight inches?
Well, you're asking us to keep ours.
I'm saying, do you want us to put enough grass cutters on to keep all the public streets below eight inches?
That your ordinance is for us.
What time is it? The mow trim. It's wooded area.
We have people driving around handing out ordinance. You hire the people for that, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Jennifer, again, stay, yeah, you can get the number from Nikki or your.
I have your number.
Okay, just call.
You wrote it onto that on my letter. When I came to see you.
A long time.
Well, I didn't know if you still had it, so. All right, Michael McKay, please. Hi, Mike, state your name for the record. And if you're a resident of Monroeville, you don't have to give your address.
Fantastic. I'm Michael McKay, and I am a resident of Monroeville. I'm the resident of the Glenwood community, and I'm also on their executive board and have been for many years. I'm here to discuss the commercial building proposal on Old William Penn Highway that will be right across from Glenwood. I also want to let you know, I'm also a business owner in Monroeville. I own a restaurant here, and I have 15 to 20 years of small to large event planning experience. And I can tell you that in the case of this venue, the numbers simply don't add up. And you may or may not care that they don't add up, but you need to be aware of what the implications of those differences being. So when you build a space out for a banquet or a party venue, a social hall, whatever you want to call it, you know, you don't build it to the size of 15 times the demand. You build it to the size of the demand for the area. So there's a reason why it's being built to the size that it's being built, because they expect the demand to be able to fill that many square feet. And just so you know, 7,500 square feet will allow for 1,250 standing guests. It will allow for 925 mixed standing and sitting guests, and it'll allow for 750 sitting-only guests. It's a far cry from the number that is allowed from the occupancy permit. I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want to go to a wedding and feel like I'm sitting in the Taj Mahal, and meanwhile, like, there's only 90 of us. So I understand also that there's a concern about monitoring the occupancy that's been approved, and that the landlord has volunteered to do that themselves. My experience, having lots of employees and having to self-regulate, it's tough, and human beings don't do it very well. So it allows for abuse by the one who has to self-regulate, and also by the governing body, ultimately the council, that is in charge of enforcing those laws. So I guess, another thing I want to know is, if I have a concern as a resident of Glenwood, or any resident of Monroeville, that this occupancy rule is being violated and there's a massive party going on, who do I call? What's the process? Do they come immediately? Do they deal with the problem as it arises? Or is there nobody to call? Or do they wait and take the opinion of the self-enforcer, the landlord? Then I want to know, what's the fine? Do they keep getting fined? Or is there a structure of fines that ultimately the business is suspended and has to shut down? Because depending on what the fine is, I mean, a party of 250 people, which would far exceed the occupancy limit, at a very modest $25 per person, which would basically get you chicken fingers, is $6,300. So if the fine doesn't even come close to that, why wouldn't they just keep throwing the parties and keep getting the fines? But again, I don't know what the structure of the fining is and what the regulations actually are, and that's one of the reasons I'm here. A much more important reason that I'm here talking about this, I am honestly concerned about the impact on my community. However, there's a more dire important consequence and concern, and that's safety. Yes, we've talked about sidewalks. But with not enough parking on site, attendees of parties will be required to at least walk on Old William Penn, if not cross it. It's dangerous, and trust me, I have personal experience with that. About seven years ago, I was getting off the bus from work, working in downtown Pittsburgh, and I crossed the street at the upper entrance of Glenwood, and I was hit by a car. My bad, my bad luck. I mean, 18-year-old girl, her mother was in the passenger seat, and she was texting. But I was hit at 45 miles an hour, and had it been anybody else that was living in my community, because I'm, well, at that point, I was probably the youngest, I would have been killed. You know, that's not a burden that I would want on my shoulders by approving something like this, knowing that there are safety issues involved. I mean, I just can't imagine wanting it. So yes, I'm concerned about the impact on my neighborhood. I'm concerned about the safety of citizens and attendees of the users of this, of this commercial building. So I implore the council, as a resident, business owner, and concerned citizen, to deny this application for the proposed building.
Thank you for your time, sir.
I think you had a couple of questions.
I do have lots of questions. I didn't know if you were able to answer them now.
Do we answer them tonight, or do we wait till Tuesday? Or how do we do that?
We still have to review the site plan tonight. Maybe that'll answer some questions.
No, but just him up, but he had questions on like fines and all that. You have a card, you can give him.
For example, if, depends on who finds the over occupancy or who's, if the police find it, they can call it in. If the fire department sees it, they can.
A resident can call, can't they? Call the police department if it, just like if you have a house party next door that, you know, there's people in the yard, you would call the police, would you not?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, well, okay.
Well, not that we have house parties, but you know.
You know what I'm saying. Yeah, so wouldn't the same hold true if some, a resident saw and thought that place was, you were standing on the corner of the.
The question becomes who goes and verifies the occupancy.
Right.
And that depends on day of week, time of day, varies.
Okay.
And that's the concern, because if you have a self-regulating landlord who wants to make a profit throwing parties, and trust me, I'm a business owner, I like making profits. But, you know, I mean, that's what it's all about. But at the end of the day, as a concerned resident on the other side of the table, is it the kind of thing where the police department or the fire department or somebody calls them the next day and says, okay, how many people did you have there? And are they going to listen to that number? Are they gonna send somebody and actually check it out? I mean, because I know you're all familiar with Glenwood residents and our executive board. I mean, we're pretty relentless with the cause. I mean, if there's problems, we will call. I mean, so I'm just urging you to think of these problems in advance before everything gets pushed through.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, there's nobody else on the list, but anybody else would like to address council? You certainly, come on down. Please sign in, state your name for the record.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Robert Sarafini. I am a Monroeville resident for over 30 years. I'm not here to complain about anything tonight. I'm here to talk about the election coming up. I want to endorse everyone who's running for office here tonight, because I think you've done a fantastic job for the community and everybody involved. I've seen the work you've put in over the years. I've been at these meetings, at least two or three meetings a month for the last, maybe eight, nine years, and I've seen the hard work all of you put in. And I think you all deserve to be reelected, and I, if I could vote for each and every one of you, I definitely would. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, we'll leave it open for anybody who would like to address council. Sir, if you'll state your name for the record and sign in.
My name's Lou Smith, and I live in Monroeville. It has been a long time since I've had to come in here. A lot of new faces up here since the last time I spoke, so congratulations. I haven't been here to say that.
Thank you.
I'm here, well, I'm here tonight, I just want to advertise a little bit. I have a letter to the editor in The Times Express today, and I'm gonna invite everybody listening here tonight and also on the TV stations to, please tune in to the next council meeting, because I have a lot to say about the election myself. And I will certainly ditto what Mr. Sarafini said about everybody sitting up here. Over four years ago, I was a constant headache to some people that was on council up here. And the voters took care of business by removing those people. I called them the four councilmen of the apocalypse of Monroeville. And they end up removing that man right there from office. And was, he was totally exonerated on everything that they accused him of, and that's why he's sitting back here. I just don't want to see the same type of scenario that we had over four years ago repeat itself. And I'm gonna be doing a talk on Tuesday, hopefully advising the residents, the voters of things that I've come to know about certain things. But we'll cover that all on Tuesday. But tonight, being as I'm not gonna have a whole lot of time on Tuesday, and I got a lot to cover, I do want to say something about two of the people running. Number one is a former colleague of mine, and that's Judge Jeffrey Herbst. He's the incumbent judge for our district. I was with Judge Herbst when he first ran. I was his campaign manager when he first ran. He's done an impeccable job in his 12 years in office. Jeff was a veteran police officer that I worked with for 25 years on the job, had a stellar reputation in that position also. I know he's very well thought of by his peers, the other magisterial districts, things like that. And he certainly, certainly deserves your vote come Tuesday from now in that position. For the last couple of years, I also got to know a young man, it's gonna be his first time in politics. And every once in a while, you meet somebody special. And that man is my neighbor, Jesse Kalkstein. He's running for school board. And he's one of the finest young men that I've had the pleasure of meeting lately. And he has the best thoughts of the community, you know, about him running for school board. So I would, I would recommend him highly also. He wants to do the right thing by the municipality and get started in politics. So tune in next Tuesday. I've got a lot to say. I'll be talking primarily about the mayor's race and certainly council. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
That's mine.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll leave the floor open for any resident who would like to address council. It is certainly your right and your time.
Good evening. Chad Steubenworth, resident of Monroeville.
Please sign in.
I can do that for you. All right, a few questions for the solicitor, if you don't mind, Mr. Ratcher. In what instances can an ordinance be overturned, and who would have the authority to override or not follow an ordinance?
When you say overturned, do you mean by an action of council?
Not by an action of council, or at least not publicly.
Well, there has to be an action by council. Ordinances are adopted by council. Council's the only party that has the authority then to override that ordinance. Essentially, it's a law, and they have the right to repeal those laws if they choose to do so.
Okay, that was my understanding. Just wanted to clarify. On April 20th, I sent an email out in regards to a few signs that were placed on public property. In response, I got an email from the manager, actually to another private citizen's email, and all of council was also copied on it. It stated there are a multitude of political signs within the right-of-ways and within public property. They all are in violation and should be removed, but sometimes prudency has to prevail. As a result, we're going to let political signs stay, so not to have unintentional bias provoked, provided, however, there's not any impediment to traffic. So my question, really where I wanted, I just want some guidance, is ordinance 2116 prohibits any signs being on public property. That was signed by Mr. Bond and Mr. Logan in July of 1999. Further, goes on to state the reasoning as to why, impediment of traffic, cluttering of public property, getting in the way of grass cutting, et cetera. And then goes on to say that, once notified, people will be notified, they have a date to remove the sign. If it's not removed, the municipality will remove it, and then bill whoever sign it was. After three days, if it's not removed, there's additional fines up to $650 and, or sorry, up to $600 and up to 30 days imprisonment. So I just wanted to clarify, I just want to kind of get a working knowledge as to where we can place signs. I know there's obviously a few weeks here, and then obviously we have an election again come November, and I just want council's guidance as to where we can place signs and what will happen to signs on public property.
Everybody looking at me?
Well, I think we need, I think we need to go through a little bit of a point A to point B to point C here.
I agree.
I think what happened, to my knowledge, and as, I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago, and as you are aware, I was not aware of some of the things you were aware of, but be that as it may.
Correct.
I think the, there, some of the first signs showed up, as I understand it, and if I'm misrepresenting anything here, anybody knows better, please tell me. Some signs showed up, and so the inspectors were taking signs out of the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. One of the candidates questioned it, and as a result of that, I think they said, okay, we've got to review this, we've got to figure out how we're gonna do this. And Tim, you might want to comment on it, because I think this is where you kind of took over and made a decision relative to what is gonna be done and not done.
Chad, as you all know, as I told, you and I talked on the phone, we have a candidate who come in and said it's a takings, to take the signs out, which, you know, I'm not an attorney, but it's not. So he proceeded to put his signs most of the time in a right-of-way. But the thing we have to keep in mind here, for all the candidates running, is their First Amendment rights to run and freedom of speech for them, okay? And we do have a right-of-way ordinance. Now, technically, you talk to Mr. Hugus, and he will have to follow the ordinance and say, yes, all the signs should come out. Now, as I said in my email to council, which I'm sure you have a copy of, we have rights of ways in the roads for the benefit of the public. If you don't know what a right-of-way is, it gives the public entity and an authority a right to go onto an easement, a right-of-way to maintain the utilities, to maintain the road. And the ordinance states that you cannot have any signs, political signs, real estate signs, signs promulgating something at the high school or whatever. You cannot have it. To regulate that is extremely difficult. Everybody in this room sees all the signs, and if you take them all out, the question becomes, is it in the right-of-way? Most old right-of-ways are 33 feet, 16 and a half feet from the middle of the road. Your more subdivisions that were built in the 60s and 70s are 50 feet. Your major arteries, Route 22, Route 286, they're 120, 150 feet. Now, if you have a candidate, or anybody in this room, you don't know really where the right-of-way is. You can guess, but you don't know. So now, a candidate goes out and he puts his in the middle of the, or in the right-of-way, out of the right-of-way, he doesn't know, or she doesn't know. So we have code enforcement officers that go out there and, and they have to take them all out. So as Chad just gets on saying, that means all, virtually, adverb, virtually, virtually all the political signs that are up will come out. Now, prudency has to prevail. If, I told Paul, and he and I talked about this at length, if I told him, enforce the ordinance to the letter of the law, all the political signs are coming out, I think we'd get a few phone calls. What do you think?
I agree with your sidestepping the original question, the email, that was my email, and also, now I know another private citizen's email, because I was copied on her email, which said, "public land," which is what ordinance 2116 is.
Different story, Chad.
Is talking about. Well, and that's what I'm here to talk about, is the public land.
Public land, different conversation.
I'm not here to present another candidate or to talk about 1443 or 1893, just 2116, which is private, or public property.
Mayor, can I interject? I apologize, Chad.
You're good.
You're referencing ordinance 2116. That is not the most recent ordinance. 2145 is the ordinance we enforce. It was adopted after that.
Which still says that not in public property.
No, it does not. This reference public property, this references public rights-of-ways.
Correct.
They're two different things.
Correct, but unless it's, what it says here is if it's not redacting anything in here, this would still be enacted, correct? If it's not redacting, saying you can place signs on public property, it is illegal to place signs on public property in Monroeville, correct?
Yeah, and I think this public property versus public right-of-way is sort of like the growing season thing. I think it probably could have been.
Well, because public property, I could put a sign, you know, if we're allowed to put signs on public property, I could put one in front of the municipal building, right?
I'd like to make a statement on this. I believe, I've been here quite some time, I believe that ordinance was established to get the signs off of all these streets that are, you look on 22, it's a disgrace. You go to Plum, you go to Penn Hills at election time, North Huntington where my daughter lives, I mean, it's insane.
Correct.
I think this ordinance, the way I believe it was meant to be, is private property. If I want to put a sign in my yard, now regardless of right-of-way, it's in my front yard, on my public property. That's entirely up to me.
Correct.
I believe that's what it was.
Yeah, and I completely agree with you. That's, my problem is there's still signs, and pictures were submitted of signs that were on public property. So I just wanted to know if that's gonna be addressed, or if I should place signs in public.
Personally feel, and I abided by that role when I ran. So you're not talking about the right-of-way, you're talking about public.
No, I don't expect people to go out there with the, with the measuring tape and.
We don't want them in front of schools or in front of this municipal building or.
That's all I want to know, is if there is a level playing field or not, if we submit, because again, if.
That's a given.
Yeah, that's.
Public placement should be addressed.
And that's my main concern.
To Steve's point, if it's in someone's private, private citizen's front yard, if their permission, it should be allowed to have it there.
I did go to that point. In my email, I went to that point, and then I talked to the manager, who then yelled at me and belittled me.
The right-of-way is up. Yeah, I think where it is right now, Chad, is, is that based upon what's taken place, there are a lot of signs up, many of them are in the right-of-way. Now, if somebody comes and plants a sign six feet outside the door here, the municipality's probably gonna take it down, because there is a prohibition against them being on what is called in 2145, public lands, which, which may or may not be the best way to draw a distinction between rights-of-way and actual public properties where public buildings are located.
Correct, and that's all, I just want to make sure that it's a level playing field for all candidates involved, that we can't place them on, right under a melon plant sign or something.
Well, yeah, we talked about the piece of property, Chad.
I noticed the one right under the melon plant sign was actually removed.
There were.
Yeah, all the ones you talked about have been removed.
Others out there. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, some have, some have been removed. I think it was removed because of.
If we're allowing this to go on, why remove them?
I don't know who, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I noticed that there had been one there for someone running for school board, and it was removed.
Correct.
And I, I don't have any idea who removed it, but.
I just want guidance.
Just one last thing, the times that I have been asked about it recently, the guiding principle, the underlying principle to all this is, treat everybody the same way. So even if you're not interpreting your ordinance properly, or you're not doing something exactly as you should, as long as you treat everybody who's a political candidate the same way, I think you stay out of trouble. That's the most important thing to do, and then from there, we can all figure out how to make it better.
I couldn't agree more. I just want to make sure, you know, the email says that we're gonna leave them all up, and if that were the case, I was gonna throw one up front, but I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, go ahead, Chad.
You're like a star child. Just stop it.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, the floor is open for any resident who would like to address council. Seeing none, we'll close that proportion of our meeting, and we'll go into our work session. And all members of council are here, but Jimmy Johns did have an emergency.
He had a family emergency.
So, he will be absent for this evening's meeting. Okay, counsel, if you'll take a look at the minutes of citizens' night meeting of April 4th, 2017, and the council work session of April 4th, 2017, are there any additions or corrections? And I do know that you just received your April 11th, 2017 regular council meeting this evening, we'll review that on next Tuesday. Seeing no other comments or corrections, and we'll go over to our reports of our tax collections, are there any issues with our tax collections? Seeing none, we'll go over to our payroll, list of bills, budget transfers and payroll, on our payroll report first, any additions or corrections?
No, sir.
Seeing none, moving over to the list of bills and budget transfers. Linda, I'm going to start off with you, any.
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Nick?
No questions, mayor?
Nothing. Paul?
Nope.
Steve?
I have nothing.
And, very good. And we'll move over to our agenda, the new business, and Tim, if you would, please.
Okay, the first item under the consent agenda is Vasa Enterprises. Applicant is requesting a site plan approval to construct 15,000 square foot building for retail shops, rental hall, and associated site amenities. The property is located at 4678 Old William Penn Highway in the C2 Business Zoning District.
The applicant is proposing a two-story building, four retail spaces on the bottom, and a 90 occupant rental space on top. The parking is divided between two levels, an upper level and a lower level. There is a loop road access, stormwater is controlled in an underground detention facility and discharged into the stream.
Is that new? That would be new.
Can you point out Old William Penn's, if I can't see it? Okay, there you go.
Old William Penn.
That's what I thought.
Oh, sorry, should have looked at that.
That's right.
Earlier, there were some comments about the historic bridge, this is the historic bridge.
Where?
Where's the board?
Move it.
Yeah.
Right here's the historic bridge.
Okay.
This, this distance here is 166 feet, so it's over 200 feet away from the proposed building. The applicant has provided elevation and a floor plan. This is the proposed floor plan. The overall square footage is 7,500 square feet, but as you can see, there are.
Is this two-story or one-story?
Two-story.
Oh.
This is, this is the second floor, this is the rental hall area. There's bathrooms, kitchens, elevator. So, the actual area that would be used for the rental hall for patrons is this rectangular area in the center. That is a table and chairs diagram layout, and the.
Is the social, is the hall on the second?
Second floor, yes.
What's the occupancy, because I mean, they're showing, how many tables, they're showing those tables with all those chairs, what's occupancy allowed on this?
Planning commission limited to 90 people.
90, how many?
90 people? For that big of a wedding, 90 people?
Folks, I, I hear you, that's okay, I mean.
Okay, so, limited to 90, I'm just trying to look at the table and chairs layout, can you show me that again? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 tables?
I don't know, how many chairs are on?
How many chairs are?
Six, six at each table.
That's 14 times 6.
That's a whole lot more than 90. It's 240 something.
No.
That's 84.
84.
Huh? 14 tables times 6, it's saying 84.
Oh, times 6.
Now, that's with no help.
No, I had a 16 in there, sorry.
Okay, but that's, that's people sitting at tables, that's not any, that's not any staff, any people there serving, any bartenders, any, so just seating, they're saying, okay.
And that's the second floor?
I just want to get an idea.
The first floor is?
Is retail spaces, that's just four retail spaces sliced into the, into the building. It's a little hard to see, they're numbered, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then the fifth area is the mechanical room.
Is that, is that April Street that somebody expressed concern on, is that on there?
Yes, that is this, this right-of-way.
Okay.
And then how many parking spots?
75.
65.
65 parking spots.
And just for reference, this is the Gander Mountain, the new Gander Mountain.
What's the elevation, I mean, how, is that, how high is that of Old William Penn? Does it say?
It might be, just a second. This is a contour plan. Each of these contours are two feet, so, 2, 4, 6.
I mean, do you have to drive up the hill to get to it?
Yes, this section of the driveway, there's 2, 4, 6 feet elevation change from the road to the first parking lot.
Are they moving any earth?
Yes.
So, let me back up a little bit, go back to the parking thing. One gentleman brought that up, that's a very reasonable concern. If you've got a hall that seats, how many would you say?
No, Sam, they're only allowing a 90 occupancy, but it seats, just the way they're showing their table layout, 84, immediately you're showing 84.
You've got, then you've got four retail spaces going underneath.
Underneath, and anybody else that could be working in the kitchen and/or shopping.
That's not going to be enough parking.
Does, does the occupancy count the people that are working there?
It's going to have to, because it's limited to 90 people.
Total, and top and bottom.
No, just for the rental hall.
Oh, just for the top?
Yes, the, the parking ratio that was established for the rental hall is one parking space per three seats.
Mayor, can I interject something real quick?
Please.
Let's talk about the parking for a minute. In our ordinance, it has a table that tells you your use group and what your ratio of parking is per use group. The first floor has, how many square feet, Paul?
It's 7,500, also broken into four spaces.
So, the first floor is required to have one parking space for every 200 square feet of retail.
Okay.
So, it's very simple, you take the square footage, divide it by 200, you get X amount of parking spaces. The problem with the social hall is, our ordinance does not address a banquet hall, social hall, anything like that, there, it does not address that in the table, so it doesn't say, for X amount of social hall, you have to have these many parking spaces. So, what we did is, we contacted our traffic engineer, who using the formula they would use to determine how many parking spaces that you would need per person in the social hall, and that's sort of, we sort of reverse engineered it. So, what happens is that they tell you, we need, you needed three, I'm sorry, one parking space for every three people, okay? The original plan showed a much larger, larger occupancy than what this plan shows. They needed 95 parking spaces. So, they went to the zoning hearing board to get a variance for that as parking spaces. Zoning hearing board on January, in January, denied the request to reduce for a variance from 90 to 65 parking spaces. So, they were denied by the zoning hearing board. So, they in tune, submitted a new site plan showing an occupancy limit of 90 people on the banquet, in the banquet hall. So, therefore, by virtue of showing those amount, that occupancy, they had the proper amount of parking space.
Did they shrink the building?
No, they kept the building footprint.
See, that's what I was just going to ask.
Wait a minute, so from January, from January till now, the building is exact same size, but they're getting less, asking for less parking, they got variance for less parking.
Correct, because they're licensed for less people.
No variance.
Because they're going to say, we're not going to put more than 90 people up there.
And that's what the discussion was, at the planning commission was, you have to limit your occupancy to 90 people, and that's where we hear some discussion.
Do we have turned things that, that keep count as they come in?
Well, it's, it's, it's an issue we talked about at the planning commission, is how do you police it?
Yes.
How do you police the 90 people?
Well, does that include the retail space?
I think it was just asked here earlier.
Yeah.
Does that include your retail space?
The retail was calculated in, with its own parking.
No, it's separate.
Well, is there two separate parking areas then?
No, it's one general parking lot.
So, if the, if the people.
So, if you have three people, that's 30 cars basically for the social hall.
Right, and then.
And you have 40, or 35 for the.
Paul, what's the breakdown?
How many total parking spaces are there on that?
65.
65.
65.
65 total.
But it wasn't, it was 95, but the building hasn't even changed size, and they want, and they're allowing them to go down to 60. Wait a minute, and what happened to the sidewalks?
Well, the applicant has requested a sidewalk waiver in front of you for action on Tuesday to not.
It's the second one.
Well, who's here to tell me why?
Well, no, you can talk to them Tuesday, they'll be.
On Tuesday, they'll come in and explain to you why they don't want to put sidewalks in.
Well, it sounds like they're trying to put 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag.
Well.
I never heard it as sugar, but I like it.
I'm listening.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Oh, you would say that.
I know.
Now, I, and again, as far as enforcement of the occupancy, as far as the concerned residents here go, if that occupancy overflows and the parking overflows on Old William Penn, we're back to who's going to enforce it?
Right, and it would have to come under the zoning ordinance, it's a violation of the site plan because it's a condition of the site plan, so it would have to.
And where are they going to park? And I understand, and we all know, if you're going to a party and there's no parking there, you're going as close as wherever you can get, and that takes you into.
But, but.
Okay. You all answered correctly.
That was, that was unison there.
Yeah, it was. So, okay.
All right.
That's how, that's how we got to the parking.
Is there fire protection in this building?
I'm sorry?
Is there fire protection in this building?
Fully.
Okay, and there's room for the fire trucks to get up there, whatever they're planning on doing?
It has full circulation around the building.
Okay.
Anything else for us, sir?
The only other thing you haven't seen that was submitted was elevations, to give you an idea what the building may look like.
Is that the storefront?
On the bottom level, yes, that's the four storefronts.
Which way is that facing?
That would be if you're looking from William Penn, looking up, you would see the two exposed floors. As you drive around the back, this is what the rental hall frontage would look like, and then these are the two side profiles to give you an idea of the slope.
Okay.
Is that it?
Well, I have one question, and you may have answered this, and if you have, I apologize. The second floor floor plan, the area where they're showing the tables and the chairs, is that 7, 7, 7,500 square feet, or is that less because the whole second floor is 7,500?
Correct, the entire second floor is 7,500.
Just off the top of your head, real quick, what does it look like, the square footage is of the, of the area where the tables actually are, where people are going to assemble?
40, 40 by 75.
Okay, so.
So, 300, 3,000?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have, I have a question, the historic site, is that on a separate parcel?
Yes.
It is. And just to clarify, I mean, it seems to me, the, the only question here is the parking. Just for the record, everything, as far as the subdivision land development zoning ordinance, stormwater, traffic study, that's all meets our requirements, am I correct or not?
Except for the outstanding waiver for the sidewalk.
Sidewalks.
That was my next question. Why are they asking for a sidewalk, specifically, Paul, why are they asking for a sidewalk?
Well, I asked that question, he said they would answer it on Tuesday.
Okay, and that leads into my second question, or excuse me, my fourth question, the applicant, where's the applicant?
Applicants typically don't come until the light of the meeting.
Well, they have, because we're very inquisitive sometimes, so.
Okay, I guess we'll have to wait till Tuesday.
If you want, I can maybe address that, we had TV 15 go out and shoot some photographs of that area that may help explain the waiver request.
Okay.
Yeah, put it up for Tuesday, oh, he already got it off there.
There we go.
That's the historic bridge, and as you go up William Penn, the steep slope comes down to the edge of the road, and there's.
Is that, Paul, is that a creek there?
Yes, the historic bridge.
Is that the creek, or the creek, the creek comes underneath the road, correct?
Yeah, where the historic bridge is, yes.
Wasn't there an old residence there at one time?
There still is a residence.
Still exists.
There's still a single family home there.
Still standing there.
Oh, somebody still lives there?
No, no, nobody lives there, it's just, it's a single family home that sits up on the hill.
Is that going to stay or go then?
What are they going to do, remove that?
It's going to go.
It's going to be demolished, yes.
So, that's where the entrance will be?
And you can see the, the area for the sidewalk is very difficult. Keep going, yeah, there's, the slope comes right down to the edge of the road, so to try to put in a four-foot sidewalk would be difficult, and that's looking from the opposite side of the road over to the site. And at the tail end of the site, there's an existing guide rail that goes right to the edge of the road, so putting a sidewalk in there would work either. So, that's a, that's why they're asking for that.
So, I'm sorry, you might have mentioned it, but where would the entrance be in relationship to that guard rail there?
The, the proposed entrance is pretty much where the existing entrance is for the existing driveway. If we can go back.
Out of that picture, right?
Yeah, I think there's, there it is.
There it is.
Okay.
And that.
Why still can't they put some sidewalk, I still see space.
You can discuss that with them on Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Oh, is there hours for the social club, is there?
No, there's no set hours.
They could have it at 3:00 AM.
Right, I mean, they would just have to abide by the noise ordinance.
Yeah.
I want to go back to the sidewalks, you're saying it wouldn't work, why wouldn't it work, what, what's the big issue on the sidewalk?
It could be made to work if you put in a retaining wall, and you could put a sidewalk in.
It's the terrain at that one spot.
So, in other words, it's really a money issue.
It's an economic, absolutely, economic.
Okay.
Will they have to, will they be required to have a liquor license?
If they serve alcohol, yes.
If they sell alcohol.
Serve.
Sell.
Sell, oh, sell.
So, where would that sidewalk lead to or come from, if it was there?
I don't believe it would connect to anything, I think it would just be a sidewalk on their frontage, I don't, I don't think there's a sidewalk above or below.
So, there's nowhere to walk to if you got on the sidewalk, or nowhere to come from if you got on the sidewalk?
Correct.
There is one there, the Giant Eagle Park.
Right there.
There would be a small gap, right in this area where the historic bridge is, that would not be the applicant's property, but the, they, they could put sidewalk in, I don't know, with the, with the guide rail there and the slope, I don't, it'd be very difficult to get a sidewalk in any of this area, you could see where the guide rail is along the.
But it could be done.
Maybe not in that area, but.
But some of the area.
Farther up the hill.
Not unless you pipe in the creek.
Right, right.
That would involve.
That's what I'm asking.
That would involve disturbing the historic bridge.
Old William Penn is opposed to no parking, right?
Certain sections are wrong, I'm not sure that specific one is, I know across the street in front of Glenwood.
Can you check that out for us just before Tuesday, just in case it's a question?
I'll check it out.
Okay. You're going to just drive up the road.
How, how will that entrance affect the, uh...
Look.
Flow of water in the, in the creek there?
Well, I think it, it has an underground storage tank, Tom, so, you know, by theory, it'll let less water in than what it is today. It'll, it'll take the water, hold it in the tank, let it out at a slow rate.
A good thing.
There are two inlets...
Is there a possibility of overflowing in that, uh, tank and flooding onto the road?
Which di, is designed to the municipal standards for all new developments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Any other thoughts, Counsel? Any other questions? First, Senator Potter.
He's moved.
Okay, Tim, if you would.
Got to break him in.
Okay, the second item, uh, is also with the Vasa Enterprises sidewalk modification. And a modification is, is, for the benefit of the public, a modification is, is very similar to a variance, although a variance is issued by the zoning hearing board, uh, of, of any municipality in Pennsylvania. But a modification is a modification to the subdivision land development regulations which Counsel would grant. So, they're requesting, as we have been speaking, Vasa Enterprises is requesting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement to their site plan application number sixteen dash five dash ST, and it says, see, a tap, attached application.
Counsel, is there any other issues that we wanted to discuss? I think we did that.
I think we probably did.
I got to ask them the questions.
Yeah, not when they get here. No, I...
Let's wait for them.
If you move on to motions, Tim?
Okay, we have one motion, a motion to accept, uh, the resignation of Beth Velasco from the Monroeville Finance Authority. She has her letter of resignation.
She's going to be moving out of the area, which is why she has to resign. That's the only reason why, um, for no other reason.
Thank you all for coming, folks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to resolutions, if you would, please.
Okay, and the first is a resolution authorizing a refunding of Bond Series A and B of 2012 and Bond Ser, and the Bond Series of 2011. This is really to appoint Piper Jaffray as the underwriter and, uh, Cohen and Grisby as the, uh, Bond Counsel. So, that'll be for Tuesday night. Number two, number two is a resolution authorizing the display of various event banners at the corner of the intersection of states Route 22 and 48 within a runaway property belonging to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. This resolution emanates from last year when we have, as everybody in the community knows, we have different events that occur in, in the community, uh, you know, during the, the summer. And they put their banners up at that corner where the, um, Allegheny County Conservation District has brush and shrubs and, and flowers. Pendott has told us it is okay to do that. That is their right-of-way there. However, they would like to have a resolution passed and put on the resolution, if you can, all those banners, within reason that you know about, those banners are going to be put up, uh, at different times during the year. So, I have the resolution for the benefit of Counsel, and if you take a look at the resolution, I believe there's four such banners that we're aware of.
Oh, yeah.
That go up. One is coming up here, which is called the Toucha Truck, which is an event that's happens at number four Fire Hall. That's by the, um, uh, I forget the name of the school again.
Spectrum.
Spectrum School. Uh, I'll get to the second one in a second. The Monroeville Jazz Festival puts up a banner and also celebrate Monroeville.
Does the boys' community college have one up, or is that the Jazz Festival?
That's the Jazz Festival.
Okay.
There's one, Nam does one.
Who?
Uh, North American Martyrs usually has one up.
Yeah, and I, I was going to, you know, this is kind of a question here that, that dovetails in with, uh, what Mr. Stubenport was talking about with respect to public land and North American Martyrs. Um, it's Pendott, you know, we're passing a resolution okaying North American Martyrs to put their banner up there, and I'm just putting it out there, I guess maybe for you, Bob. I mean, can we, can we do that, even though it's Pendott's right-of-way? It's not our right-of-way, it's Pendott's.
But they requested it, though.
They request, no, no, Pendott, they request it. What, usually, North American Martyrs puts their banner up there is my, is, is my point.
The question is?
The question is, since they are a religious, a religious, um, entity, and they put their banner up there, can we put them on this resolution, um, because they're a religious entity, even though it's not our right-of-way? This is what Pendott is asking us to do.
What is it that they're advertising?
They advertise their summer festival.
Yeah, I, I, that's a secular event for me. I don't see a problem with that. Now, I will tell you that I'm aware of the fact that the mayor was contacted a couple of years ago by somebody who saw Saint Bernadette's with some kind of a banner, some organization out of Wisconsin.
Wisconsin, exactly. And they... And that's why I brought this up.
Yeah, and I mean, they, you know, they're just, I think, telling us how to live our lives, but, um, it's a secular event, I don't see an issue. All the Wisconsin people, stay in Wisconsin, leave us alone.
Oh, I had other adjectives I would have rather have used.
Okay, um, all right, we'll, we'll leave that on there then. Okay, a resolution number three, resolution, uh, well, let me preface this, uh, for Counsel. Uh, this was not, you know, on the agenda for your weekend packets, and I did send Counsel an email today on this, and I just found out about this grant on Tuesday. And it's a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for funds with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to apply for funds from the Active Allegheny Grant Program in the amount of $49,040 for the proposed Monroeville Active Transportation Plan. Now, this would be a grant that we would hire a consultant to perform, uh, well, I'll read it verbatim right here. The purpose of the Active Allegheny Grant Program is to provide financial assistance to communities, to develop plans and design transportation projects that will, when implemented, provide bicycle and pedestrian connections to important local destinations and transportation systems and increase residents' opportunities for physical activity. The grant is not for actually building these types of things, but it is to do a study, to hire consultants. Now, I think if Counsel would want to pass this resolution, I think we would, uh, have a good chance of getting this grant because of Wilkins Township, with whom we are doing our comprehensive plan.
Yes.
They applied for this grant and received $35,000, and they are in the process of performing it right now.
Yeah.
And because we are doing a joint comprehensive plan, which we got a grant from the Allegheny County Redevelopment Authority, called the Comprehensive Plan, I think we stand a good chance of getting this grant, uh, because we're, uh, Wilkins is doing the same thing, and we're doing a comprehensive plan with them. Any comments from Counsel to know or yay? Leave it on the agenda?
Yes, great.
Leave it on the agenda.
Great idea. Absolutely.
And you are done there, sir?
Okay.
Thank you. Bob, if you'll do the single ordinance, sir, please.
Yes, this is an ordinance authorizing the incurring of non-electual debt by the municipality of Monroeville for the purposes of providing for costs of various capital projects, refunding the prior bonds of the municipality, and paying the cost of issuing the bonds. And this, the idea here is to refinance the 2012 bonds, pay them off, and recognize the savings.
Yeah, we're...
Is this not what the gentleman came up and explained all to us about the...
Yes.
Okay, that's what the whole thing wrapped into a little...
Chip McCarthy.
Gotcha.
I was getting, just ready to say, we all heard that, so... Any questions on this ordinance? Okay, thank you, Bob. And we'll move over to reports of our municipal staff, and Bob, I'm going to turn to you again. Any other words of wisdom?
No, thank you.
Tim, I'm going to hold you off, you got a couple of things there, so, Paul, any other words of wisdom?
Actually, Councilman Johnson, on his way out to his emergency, left me a note here. He did receive some phone calls concerning the functionality of the light at 22 and Elliott, and also the condition of Elliott Road itself, which, uh, Tim and I have been discussing. And the light, we're still looking at. It's one of those things that you give too much green time to Route 22, then you back up Elliott. If you give too much green time to Elliott, you back up 22. So, we're trying to figure it out.
Very good. How about you, Josephine? Any words of wisdom for the rest tonight?
I have nothing tonight.
Very good. Okay, Tim, I'm going to let you have it.
Okay, uh, Councilman Wilson, he asked me, uh, in a conversation, uh, last week about a conditional use hearing, uh, because when, um, when we approve certain plans that come through here, uh, there is attached to a, a public hearing, which is called a conditional use public hearing. And he asked me to explain that to the public and also to Counsel to bring that more up to speed on it. Um, a conditional use hearing is exactly what it is. It is the right of Counsel or any elected body in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to put implied conditions on a development if it's required under our zoning ordinance for, quote, "a conditional use." The zoning hearing board has a similar thing, and they're called special exceptions, but the conditional use can be expressed explicitly in our zoning ordinance, and there could be two, three, four, or five provisions that say, "This is a conditional use, and you have to abide by these express provisions," uh, if you're going to adopt this, this land development. But the thing I want to stress more so with Counsel is there are implied reasonable conditions that you can impose on a development if the development has a conditional use. Uh, what brought this up, Tom and I talking, was the, uh, recent Starbucks development that we approved, and they have a drive, and they have a drive-through down there. And the drive-through, any retail entity that comes into Monroeville and they want a drive-through, it doesn't matter if it's a drugstore, if it's a coffee shop, that drive-through in and of itself is a conditional use. And using that as an example, Counsel can put reasonable conditions that are not explained in our zoning ordinance that are reasonable. They can be just prudent, they can be just common sense. For instance, maybe it's next to a residential development, and you want a little bit more buffering there. I mean, it doesn't say in the zoning ordinance how much, it says a certain amount of buffering, but you want to put a little bit more in because there's residents here that are saying, you know, "You're going to have a lot of noise with this drive-through," or whatever the case might be. So, there's a lot of conditional use, uses in the community, and that's, that's kind of the essence of, of what a conditional use is. Now, with a conditional use becomes a public hearing, goes along with it, where our solicitor will swear people in, and our stenographer will take, uh, transcripts, because if it ever goes to court, those transcripts, you know, would have to, you know, go to court with it. So, people have to be sworn in that they're going to tell the truth, and what they say goes on record. Uh, it goes on record in a minute's here, but it's, it's a public hearing. So, when you come to the meetings or you're listening to them on TV, and there's a conditional use, this Counsel may put the express conditional use that are in our zoning ordinance, that, for instance, we have to put more buffering in, and it says we have to put in four feet of more buffering. But Counsel can look at this thing, and, and with the advice of the solicitor, with Paul Yugus, with Paul Wildin, and even me, offering them advice, and even coming from the residents, and say, "Hey, we think this is reasonable to say you need this, this, and this." And it can become a little bit subjective, but that's what a conditional use is. Is that good? Does that explain it, Tom?
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question in regard to that?
Sure.
Can we not just change something in the zoning ordinance, um, that has a drive-through to add one particular thing that is consistent every single time, so...
You can do that, but you...
I.e., a bypass lane.
Well, since you're talking, I mean, since you're talking about, yes, you can do that. To answer your question with any, anything in the zoning ordinance, it would have to be an amendment. It would have to be advertised, there would have to be a public hearing, and then it would have to be passed, just like any other ordinance, but there would be a public hearing with it. Uh, if, if, it depends on what you're talking about contained within the zoning ordinance. Now, if you're talking about changing a zoning district, then that gets a little...
No, 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 I'm talking, but just say, add an amendment to the existing, that when you come before us with a, you want to have a drive-through, that you have to have a bypass lane.
You can do that, but I, you know, you can do that, and I'm not saying that's, I'm not saying that's a bad idea.
I think we kind of missed it on the last one.
All right, I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but, um, I'm trying to think of an example of maybe where you would not need a bypass lane.
I would say then, then they ask for a variance that they don't have to put it in.
Good point.
It'd be easier, I think, that way than the way we have it now.
Good point.
So, um, is there something that we can do to maybe have it put on to the agenda?
You can, you can...
Um, I'd like to ask my fellow Counsel people what they think.
I think, I think at this point, if Counsel wants staff to proceed with what Linda is talking about, I, let, let me talk with the two Pauls over there, and, and get back to you next month.
Are you guys all okay with us looking at that?
I think we can eliminate a lot of problems.
I do, too. So, why, why not take a look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Tim, continue.
Okay, um, we had a Arbor Day, not we, we didn't have an Arbor Day poster contest.
Someone...
We didn't have that. Um, who did?
I like that, Nick, someone did.
No, we did. Um, Joanne Morris, she was, uh, talking about this at the staff meeting on Monday, and, um, the parking recreation department, when I say we did, I meant Counsel, okay? The parking recreation department held an Arbor Day poster contest from the, uh, from the beginning of the new year through April the 10th, okay? It was open to students grades three through five, and we received a number of entries and a grand prize winner, and two honorable mention winners were named. The grand prize winner, which her picture is up on the monitor, is Salma Mukatar. I don't know if I pronounced her name right, but I'm sure I'll hear about it if I didn't. Mukatar, Mukatar probably is it. She received a flowering cherry tree to plant in her yard, as well as a soft-sided lunch bag from the Arbor Foundation, which I am a member of the Arbor Foundation also, I will say that.
New year tree.
Fourth grade honorable mention was Dan Baker. He received a soft-sided lunch bag from the Arbor Foundation, and fifth grade honorable mention was Ishan Sinha. He received a soft-side lunch bag from the Arbor Foundation also. So, congratulations, yeah, well, I think I got them all right. I don't know. I don't know. I think, I'm sure I'll hear about it if I didn't, but congratulations to the three winners, uh, from the Arbor Foundation poster contest. And I have one other item, uh, under, uh, my agenda, uh, which is kind of an extemporaneous one. Uh, this past week was the Main Street National Conference, was here in Pittsburgh, at the Wyndham. And I received an email last week from a young lady, uh, by the name of Mary Jackson, who is the city clerk or the city manager in Monroeville, Alabama, all right? And she wanted to visit Monroeville, Pennsylvania. And the mayor and I met with, uh, Ms. Jackson and her Main Street manager, and there's our pictures today, and the manager is Mary, is there on the left, and the mayor, and the Main Street manager, Ann Marie, is in the middle there, and the other lady is Valinda. She's actually from Georgia, and they came to visit us today, and they brought us a little gift. And it is a Christmas tree bulb that has, Joe, can you zoom in on that?
Oh, it says Monroeville.
Okay, that has Monroeville, Alabama on it.
Cute.
You're zooming.
That's really nice.
How many knew that? There's a Monroeville, Alabama.
Now, if anybody knows, what, what is famous about Monroeville, Alabama?
Comes up on Google.
Does anybody know?
I have no clue.
Okay, it's where they filmed the movie To Kill a Mockingbird, and Harper Lee, who's the author of that book, Pulitzer Prize author, she's actually from Monroeville, Alabama, and that book and movie is based on her life in Monroeville, Alabama, uh, probably back in the forties and the, and the...
That's cool.
Back in the forties.
And the company I retired from, we have a plant down there.
Yeah, so, um, we got those gifts, and I gave them a couple of T-shirts, and we're going to stay, uh, in touch, and they're going to be kind of a sister city to us.
Nice.
So, I just wanted to mention that to the public and Counsel.
Very cool.
So, you know they have a YMCA, Monroeville, Alabama? Um, ask me why I know that.
I don't, you Googled it.
So, before me and my wife moved to Monroeville, I was Googled Monroeville. I told my wife, "Oh, they got a YMCA in Monroeville, that's great, somewhere cheap we can go and exercise." And she's like, "Yeah, no, I grew up in Monroeville. We don't have one." I'm like, "It's right here, it's in Alabama. They have a nice YMCA."
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, thank you.
True story. Thanks for sharing.
True story.
You're all crew.
You all crew.
Thank you, Tim, and I will move over to our reports of our municipal staff. And Thomas, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thanks to all the folks that volunteered for the Jack Sedlack cleanup. It was terrific. I think a good time was had by all. As usual, it was very windy, very chilly, and, but there was a great turnout. Thanks again, folks.
Steve?
I have nothing tonight.
I'm good.
Ron?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to remind all the residents, and tonight was a good meeting to comment on this, that we encourage any resident with any concern on any new development to come up to council and express your concerns. You know your neighborhood's better than anybody, and we may have overlooked an issue that we were unaware of. So please come to the meeting anytime and express your concerns to council. I received a call, or an email and a call, from a resident concerned about the hiring of police, and encouraging that, and they just wanted to know where it was at. So Doug, maybe you could tell or bring us to data as to where the hiring procedure is.
Gladly, Councilman Harvey, thank you for the opportunity. We currently have gone through the written test, the physical agility, and the first round of interviews. We have thirty-eight individuals left. We've interviewed seventeen of them. We'll interview the next, whatever, number twenty, twenty-one on Tuesday and the nineties. We hope to have the civil service promulgate or certify a list by the end of May. And then after that, just as we have to do a background check, which is fairly extensive, a polygraph is part of ours, and they have to have a medical physical before they're offered employment if they're on the top of the list. And one last thing, manager, we get nine-one-one calls sent to us from Monroeville, Alabama.
That's what Jim Tomasic said to me today when I was-
So we did know, that's how we knew there was a Monroeville, Alabama, we have to send them back down. We kind of can tell by their accent, the southern accent, so.
Just a little bit.
Just a little.
Anything else, Ron?
That's all.
Yes, Mayor, congratulations to Salma and the other, the fourth grader and fifth grader for the tree plant, the Arbor Day poster contest. In conjunction with that, they're going to be having a, a tree planting, actually, at Valley Park down off Vabre's Creek, if you go down towards the Vabre's Creek Bel Air Pool. That is on May thirteenth, from nine AM to twelve PM. It's from the Turtle Creek Watershed Association and the Allegheny Watershed Alliance. They're planting twenty, twenty thousand? No, twenty, a lot of trees. They're planting some trees down there, saving a lot of the best.
Twenty thousand, dear God.
I think it's three hundred.
No.
Say that again?
I believe it's two hundred.
Yes, two hundred trees, yes.
That's a little better than twenty.
Yeah, but that's a lot, that's still, that's a lot.
It's just a comma and a couple zeros.
Exactly. So they're built, they're gonna be planning that, so if you can, if you want to join in, help out, just come on down on May thirteenth. We'll stay in the same area. The Monroeville Community Pool will be opening May twenty-seventh. They have some reduced hours the first, the first couple of weeks that they're open into Memorial Day, but they do, they are open for business hopefully, May twenty-seventh. You can get your memberships through the Recreation and Parks Department now.
Turn the heat up a little bit.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
But they'll be opening soon. The Monroeville Summer Concert Series, it doesn't start till June, but it's always a, they have great events presented by the Monroeville Recreation Department and sponsored by UPMC East. The first act, June eleventh, Joe Greshacki, Pittsburgh guy, maybe Springsteen will show up, you never know. But, but we'll keep talking about that as it gets closer.
Hold your breath.
And I want to encourage council on Tuesday to pass the resolution for the Active Allegheny Grant Program for pedestrian and bike studies, is something we've been talking about quite a bit through the comprehensive, Joint Comprehensive Plan Planning Committee with Wilkins and Churchill. Also, we can branch out from the Heritage Trail that is going through at the bottom of Saunders Station Road, which will run from, I talk about it a lot, but it runs from Trafford, the BY Park, through Monroeville into Duff Park. It's gonna be completed by the end of August. They're working right now, the trail's actually closed right now. Public Works been working on a detention pond down there, and they're gonna be paving the parking lot. As of today, there was a mountain of stone down there, so right now the trail is closed, but they're moving pretty quick on it, they're doing a great job. It's gonna be a great asset for the community. At the end of next year, it will be from the BY Park through Monroeville up to Salzburg, twenty-six miles. And then what we want to try to do is get four more miles between Trafford and downtown, and we can connect with the Great Allegheny Passage. So this is a really big thing for this community coming through here, and perhaps this Active Allegheny Grant Program might help assist with some of the connections to that trail. So I encourage council to do that on Tuesday. And with that, that's all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Linda?
I'm gonna start out with a couple of personal items. One is congratulations to my son, our son and daughter-in-law, who just had their second baby, which would be my second grandson, Jacob Vander, he weighed in at nine-nine, so God bless my daughter-in-law. And so he's gonna be a big boy. And happy third birthday to our grandson Cameron, who just turned three on Monday. So we've had quite the family events happening, so it's all been very exciting, and we feel very blessed. Also, I want to send out some best wishes for Speedy Recoveries to Chris from the Senior Center. He had a health issue, which I don't want to go into, that's all personal, but I want to wish him the best from myself, as well as to Mrs. Sedlack, who also had a health issue, and I want to send out my best wishes for her as well. Okay, so, I want the people on Calvington Drive to know that as I was walking around door to door, I was asked in regard to lighting on the street, that they feel that the second half of the road is too dark, and so with the kids trying to play outside and people taking walks, it's, it's a really nice long street, but it's too dark. There will be a light added around house number one-seventy-four. Timeline is approximately gonna be about four weeks to complete, but it is going to be taken care of, so I hope that helps the issue for the residents there. The other thing is, there's some history this year with Melon Plan. Melon Plan is actually turning one-hundred, two thousand seventeen. It was developed in nineteen-seventeen. Myself, Mr. Little, the Historic Society, the, the Monroeville Library, we have done a lot of research to try and find information on the past and how Melon Plan came to be. We have done our best to put together a few items that we can, we've gotten a few pictures. The mayor's gotten involved, and he's actually written a proclamation. So I would encourage the residents of Melon Plan on Tuesday evening to please attend the meeting. We are going to have a proclamation read by the mayor and presented to the citizens, the residents of Melon Plan, and they can keep it there in Melon Plan, if they keep it at the fire hall, wherever they choose. But, I mean, I just think a hundred, a hundred years is something just amazing, and we have the availability to celebrate that as a community. So I invite them all, stories, bring stories, bring pictures, whatever you have, please. And then last will be the Senior Center reports. First of all, the new equipment that we have talked about since budget time has finally arrived, and it's all installed. So if you haven't been there to see it yet or use it yet, please go to the Senior Center. Everybody's thrilled to death with it. As we know, they always do a great job over there. The five-hundred-dollar jackpot bingo dates are set, will be May sixth, which is this Saturday, and June the third, games start at one o'clock, and there's always a guaranteed five-hundred-dollar jackpot. There's the hoedown that we talked about, the second one's happening Wednesday, May seventeenth, at twelve o'clock, six dollars per person. Deadline to buy the tickets is May tenth, May tenth. So if you're interested, there's entertainment, food, please hurry up and get your tickets. And very last thing, honest to God, is all the letters have gone out to our summer help that have applied. So everyone that, I think everybody that applied has been given a position for this summer, which is great. And I would just want to welcome them all, and we're looking forward to a great season with you. And with that, Mayor, I am finished.
And I'll be real quick as well. I just wanted to thank all the residents for coming out, especially on some of the issues, the grass issue and all that. And, you know, we really will take a look and see if we can do that a little bit better. And Tom, you brought it up, and it's true, I think, we had over six hundred people attend the cleanup day, which, again, speaks volumes to me as the mayor. We do care about our community, and I just want to thank all of them for that. Also, today, I'm sure you all knew, or hopefully you knew, today is the National Day of Prayer. Hopefully, you took a few moments out just to reflect, if you would. I certainly think our country can certainly use all the help we can get. We seem to be a very divided nation, which is quite sad. And last but not least for my report is, I just, I'm gonna do it again as well on Tuesday, please do your civic duty on May sixteenth, come out and vote. It's certainly, a lot of people gave up their lives so we can have that right. You know, we, we kind of almost take it for granted. I mean, they're predicting low numbers, I think that's sad. Please get out there. What we do up here affects you almost immediately versus even the federal government. When we pass an ordinance or a resolution or anything that, that has to do with Monroeville, you get affected immediately. So you should really get out there, keep our feet to the fire, but also get out there and vote. I mean, that's, that's, please, I can't stress that enough. And with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.